Okay, okay. How we met?
Yeah, yeah. How's he doing?
He had a complex activity.
No.
Good morning, everyone. The meeting will now come to order. Ms. Griffith, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Ms. Werner?
Here.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Anderson? Mr. Armeter?
Here.
Mr. Blossman?
Here.
Mr. Brown? Mr. Shadowland?
Here.
Mr. Dampf?
Here.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Lockett?
Here.
Mr. Mallett?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Starnes?
I'm present.
Mr. Woods?
Here.
Mr. Yarborough. Mr. Chairman, you do have a quorum.
Thank you. I understand there are two individuals registered for a public comment. Ms. Griffith, who will provide public comment this morning?
We have one from Mr. Doc Gories and another by Ms. Janet Hayes on the Charity Hospital redevelopment project.
Okay, please come in that order.
Good morning, and welcome to Shreveport. We are in the process of celebrating Martin Luther King Week, and we are having a program at LSU at 11 o'clock. And we are going to be honoring some very distinguished individuals, and one of them is your board chair. And because he's busy with board activities, we've decided to make the presentation in the public forum section. And one of the other honorees is going to be Dr. C.O. Simkins, who worked very closely with Dr. Martin Luther King. But let me just share a little bit about this honoree. James...
Briefly, briefly, please.
Oh, I've been warned, I got three minutes. I'll use two and a half.
Ninety, ninety seconds.
Your chair has asked me to stand by and take a seat.
But let me just share a few things that you probably already know, but bear is repeating. James M. Williams is a nationally recognized trial attorney who has litigated cases in fifteen different states. He is one of the nation's top one percent of attorneys, according to the National Association of Distinguished Counsel. He has been named Super Lawyer by the rating service that recognized the top five percent of lawyers in each state. He has also been selected as the top one hundred trial lawyers by the American Trial Lawyers Association. And I could go on and on, but for the sake of time, I won't. I think you will recognize that he is a worthy recipient of the Martin Luther King ICE Award, standing for Integrity, Courage, and Empowerment. And the first recipient of the award that will be given today downstairs at a program. But because he's committed otherwise, we wanted to give it to him at this time. So, Mr. Williams, at this time, we'd like to present this award to you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
And I might also add that one of the items that's not on your bio that is noteworthy is that he's a member of Alpha Phi Alpha fraternity.
You've all heard that.
The oldest. And I might add that he became a member of NewPSI at LSU. And I might also add that I am a charter member of that chapter when we chartered in 1978.
There you go. Dr. Mark Gory, Dr. Mark Gory, who's the head of superintendent of schools, is the speaker this morning downstairs at 11 o'clock in our theater. If you haven't seen our theater, take a look at it, it's gorgeous. But that's where the community events want to be occurring.
Larry, that's at 1 o'clock?
11 o'clock.
11 o'clock.
Because that's what the student common hour is. So our students, faculty and staff, and community people will be there. So they're recognized, and we get Dr. Gory as the speaker today.
The next speaker we have for public comment, and thank you, thank you very much for the award. I really, I really appreciate it. The next person we have for a public comment is, I'm sorry, give me the name?
Ms. Hayes.
Ms. Hayes, please, thank you.
Good morning, LSU Board of Supervisors. Speaking of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., one of my favorite quotes of his is, "The arc of the moral universe is long, but it bends towards justice." So just hope that we can all keep that in mind as we move forward in our lives. I know we don't have much time, so I'm going to get right to the point. Firstly, I'd like to express my disappointment that as a resident of New Orleans, I had to drive three hundred and twenty-five miles yesterday at my own expense and on short notice to attend this meeting regarding a development on a publicly owned building in my city. I'm not sure if the board is aware that despite multiple assurances from Governor Edwards and Commissioner Darden for a fully transparent process and robust public input, this is the first public meeting regarding Charity Hospital New Orleans adaptive reuse since LSU and the state shuttered the building in 2005. And that's despite the fact that the hospital was sparkly clean and ready to reopen just three weeks after Hurricane Katrina, as well documented in the film Big Charity. Its closure impacted residents in incalculable ways. It shut people out of health care, resulting in increase to sickness and death. LSU demolished an historic neighborhood and displaced an entire community. LSU eviscerated vital psychiatric treatment and care and stabilization services for seriously mentally ill people in mental health crisis with no full replacement. Yet instead of inviting residents to the table to help heal that wound, this new process has exacerbated the disappointment and distrust of the community. Per number four on the agenda item, as someone with extensive knowledge about Charity Hospital's closure, I was hired as a consultant to help advise on what fleshed out to be the Spirit of Charity District. I can assure you that at every meeting, the public were told the discussion about the building itself was hands-off. As a result, the petition began to the governor, the commissioner of administration, the LSU Board of Supervisors, Mayor Cantrell, all city council members, and state and congressional leaders representing District B that reads, "As a resident of Louisiana, I urge that you ensure no further development of Charity Hospital or ancillary buildings occur until there has been a complete and robust public input process conducted by an impartial third-party agency on their adaptive reuse. I urge that you support scrapping the ongoing LSU Real Estate and Facilities Foundation process and instead support the reissuing of a request for qualifications and a request for proposals only after soliciting ideas from New Orleanians and only after completion of a thorough health, environmental, and social impact assessment study in the area bounded by Poigre Street, Loyola Avenue, Basin Street, Bienville, and Cleveron Avenue. I urge that if the name Charity is to be used to memorialize any redevelopment of the area, you support only efforts that focus on uses that meet the needs of those in crisis, the underserved, and the under-resourced, achieving and surpassing the 279-year legacy of its predecessor, reflecting the true spirit of charity. If I hadn't been driving all day yesterday, I would have printed a copy of the petition to give to you. I would also have printed a copy of the redevelopment proposal by Healing Minds NOLA to transform Charity Hospital into a one-stop shop mental health care and research center of excellence to address the epidemic of untreated serious mental illness. I'm thrilled that CMS has now offered states IMD waivers that would allow Medicaid to reimburse institutions for mental diseases with more than sixteen beds for adults that would make that proposal a reality. To conclude my short comment, residents want the redevelopment of Charity Hospital to be based on community needs, not developers' pocketbooks. Thank you."
Thank you. Mr. Lockett, can you please convene the Academic Affairs Committee meeting?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Griffin, please call the roll.
Mr. Anderson? Mr. Lockett?
Here.
Mr. Armeter?
Here.
Mr. Shadowland?
Here.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Mallett?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Yarborough. Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum.
Thank you. First, I would like to congratulate Dr. Haney for becoming provost. Can we give her a round of applause before she presents the consent agenda? Now, with respect, I call on you to present the items for consideration.
Thank you so, thank you so much, Mr. Lockett. The Academic and Research Committee regular agenda is replete with honors and recognitions of several outstanding members of the LSU community. First, we submit two requests to grant honorary degrees for the LSU A&amp;M campus. Per PM seven, which dictates the guidelines for awarding honorary degrees, consideration for nomination should be based on the individual's contribution to his or her field of endeavor or to society in general. Individuals nominated should be of such outstanding character and distinction that their acceptance of such a degree would honor both Louisiana State University and the campus presenting the award. Individuals who have made substantial contributions to the development of Louisiana State University, a campus of the university, the state of Louisiana, or the nation should be given special consideration for nomination to an honorary degree. Thus, with that in mind, the first request for your review is to award an honorary Doctor of Arts degree to Mr. Frank Wicks. Mr. Wicks has been a devoted member of the LSU musical community through his thirty years as LSU's Director of Bands and as the Caruth Alumni Professor in the School of Music. Under his leadership, the Tiger Marching Band received numerous awards, including the Suddler Trophy, awarded annually to a college marching band with the highest musical standards and innovative marching routines, received the SEC Directors' unanimous recognition of the most outstanding marching band of the SEC, and was inducted into the Louisiana Music Hall of Fame. As the LSU Wind Ensemble Conductor, he has led the wind ensemble to national prominence at both the regional and national conferences of the College Band Directors National Association. And as a professor of wind conducting and wind literature, he has guided many LSU students through graduate degrees who have gone on to be successful in their music profession. This includes high school band directors, who in turn frequently send students back to LSU to continue the tradition of music excellence. And I am envious that at the age of eighty, Mr. Wicks continues to be a renowned guest conductor and clinician. He has brought great distinction to the university and has impacted the lives of thousands of students at LSU. The honorary degree request for Mr. Wicks is supported by the faculty in the College of Music and Dramatic Arts, Dean Todd Queen, and both the LSU A&amp;M Committee and LSU University-wide Committee on awarding honorary degrees. And I submit this request to the board.
Are there any questions? Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Are there any objections? Without objections, it is approved. Provost Haney, can you present the next item?
Yes, the second request for your review is to award an honorary Doctor of Letters degree to Mr. Matthew Matt G. McKay. Mr. McKay is the Chair, President, and CEO of a small, little company you may know, All-Star Automotive Group. Mr. McKay grew up in Baton Rouge, graduated from Terra High School, and attended LSU from 1972 to 1976 before embarking on a career in the automobile industry. In 1987, he founded the All-Star Automotive Group, which has become a highly successful enterprise of eleven automobile dealerships representing thirteen franchises and employing nearly eight hundred employees. As well as being a successful entrepreneur, Mr. McKay is an agent of social change. Named as the 2018 Time Magazine Dealer of the Year, his extensive philanthropic portfolio includes work to improve the public school systems in Baton Rouge and the surrounding areas, including the establishment of the Ascension Fund for academic excellence, awarding grants to teachers to inspire excellence in public education, and the Scholastic Read and Rise Program to promote literacy in twenty-four low-income Baton Rouge-area schools. As an avid supporter for both K-12 and higher education in the state, Mr. McKay sits on numerous academic and philanthropic committees. At LSU in 1998, he and his wife were the first two donors for the LSU Business Education Complex. His fundraising efforts have also provided twenty superior endowed graduate scholarships for students pursuing degrees in the Department of Kinesiology. Numerous business and industry professionals, members of academia, and countless students of public schools in the state can all attest that Mr. McKay wholeheartedly strives for the betterment of Baton Rouge, LSU, and Louisiana. The honorary degree request for Mr. McKay is supported by the faculty in the E.J. Usso College of Business, Dean Richard White, and both the LSU A&amp;M Committee and the LSU University-wide Committee on awarding honorary degrees. I submit this request to the board.
Are there any questions? We have a move and a second. Are there any objections? Without objections, it is passed. Dr. Haney, can you please present the consent agenda?
Yes, the last request on the regular agenda from the LSU A&amp;M is to honor the vast legal accomplishments of Judge James L. Dennis. The LSU Law Center would like to name their clinical legal education program in his honor. With their one million dollar pledge, the Dennis family has shown their support and faith in the LSU Law Center and in the success of current and future students of the program. James L. Dennis graduated from the LSU Law Center in 1962, where he was the managing editor of the Louisiana Law Review and was elected to the Order of the Cof, an honor reserved for the top ten percent of the graduating class. After practicing law in Monroe, Louisiana for ten years, he served as State District Judge for the Fourth Judicial District. In 1995, after twenty years of service with the Louisiana Supreme Court, President Bill Clinton nominated him to serve as Circuit Judge for the U.S. Fifth Circuit Court of Appeals, a prestigious position he currently holds. Judge Dennis is an avid law educator and has served as a visiting professor at the LSU Law Center and Tulane School of Law. He also is involved with numerous professional and community associations, including the Louisiana State Bar Association and the American Bar Association, to name a few. He serves on the LSU Law Alumni Board of Trustees, the Dean's Council, and is the founding member of the LSU Law Pew Institute for Justice, which he has philanthropically supported. Not only has this exceptional man been inducted into the LSU Hall of Fame, he has also been named Distinguished Alumnus of the Year and received an honorary Doctor of Law's degree. We request this naming in honor of Judge Dennis's profound judicial career and his never-ending pursuit of justice for Louisiana and the United States. The naming request for the James L. Dennis Clinical Legal Education Program is supported by the LSU A&amp;M Naming University Facilities and Academic Programs Committee, and I submit this request to the board.
Thank you so much. That concludes... Okay. Are there any questions? Do I see a motion to move? Do I see a second? See a motion and a second? Are there any objections? Without objections, it is passed. Mr. Chairman, that concludes the business of the academic committee.
We do have the consent agenda.
Oh, sorry, I thought we were on the consent. I'm sorry. Continue.
Mr. Lockett, the consent agenda today, we have a request for a letter of intent for a doctoral program, a change in credit hour requirement to compensate for new training requirements, a new dental program, several endowed scholarships, endowments, and chairs. And I submit this consent agenda to the board.
Thank you. That concludes the business of the academic committee. Do I see a motion to conclude the committee?
One second.
We need to vote? Okay. Sorry, guys. Do I see a motion to vote? Do I see a second? It's been moved and seconded. Are there any objections? Without objections, it is moved. Now this concludes the business of the academic committee.
Give us still a second.
Correct? Yes, we got it. Do I see a motion? To conclude?
Move.
And a second? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Lockett. Mr. Shadowland, would you please convene the... Actually, before we do that, let's take Mr. Dampf. Would you please convene the Legal Affairs Committee?
Yes, sir. May I ask for us to go to Executive Session?
So moved.
That's for second.
Second.
And the objection. It's time to move to Executive Session to discuss personnel.
Thank you. Where we going? Out the doors right here to the left will be a sign that says Executive Session.
Mr. Shadland, would you please convene the Finance Committee?
Yes, sir, thank you. Nicole, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Shadland?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Lockett?
Here.
Mr. Mallett?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Ms. Werner?
Here.
Mr. Yarborough?
Mr. Chairman, you have a call.
Okay, thank you. We have two items on the agenda today. One, the first is a presentation and an update on alternative revenue and cost-saving opportunities, which of course is kind of an ongoing discussion that we'll always be having in the Finance Committee. In the essence of kind of clock management and time, there's no action items though there, and so if it is okay, we will defer that till our March meeting. And so I've talked to Dan and just asked him if he'll hold off on that. That leaves us with the only other item being to look at some tuition schedules for that we need to approve for the Health Sciences Center in New Orleans. So Dan, if you would, present those for us.
Thank you, Mr. Shadland, members of the Board. The one action item that we do have for the Finance Committee today is a request from the Health Science Center in New Orleans to approve some tuition and fee amounts for new programs and implement fees relative to authority granted in House Bill 113 of the 2017 legislative session. There are really three sets of increases included in this request that are before The first is to set tuition and fees for two new programs. One is the Bachelor of Science in Public Health, and also for a Doctorate of Nursing Practice and Nurse Anesthesia. The second is to basically reset and consistently apply the same fee across different programs offered by the Health Science Center. And the third is a request for fee increases and in some cases decreases for nine academic programs at the Health Science Center. John Harmon is the Chief Financial Officer for the Health Science Center, and I'm turning it over to him to see if he has anything additional to add.
Thank you, Dan. Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. The only thing I would add is that it has been our approach to fees, student fees, over a number of years to be very strategic and targeted in how we make adjustments. We want to make certain that our programs and curriculums are priced consistently with our peer institutions across the southern region, so rather than doing an adjustment across the board, because our programs are so different, we do look at the individual institutions in the other states for the same types of curriculums, and so that's why when we do adjustments, they don't hit all of their programs, and they hit some of our programs a little more than others. So that's the purpose behind that. Any questions?
You received this information in regards to these schedules, and I would pause and see if anyone has any questions? Not a would entertain a motion to approve the items before you. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that concludes the matter, concludes the agenda of the Finance Committee. I would ask for a motion to adjourn. Do you have any? All in favor? Aye. Okay, thank you. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. We're going to take the next item out of turn. Ms. Jones, would you convene the Athletic Committee?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Griffith, please call roll.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Anderson?
Mr. Armeter?
Here.
Mr. Blossman?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Mr. Dampf?
Here.
Mr. Starnes?
Here.
Mr. Woods?
Here.
Madam Chairman, you have a call.
Thank you, Nicole. At this time, I'll ask Joe to present on the item.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Board Members, thank you. We would like you to consider an increase in ticket pricing for athletic department. The proposal that you have in front of you represents a 2.7 percent increase in ticket prices in Tradition Fund. We have not gone up in four years. We feel that this is necessary to fulfill the obligations that we have in front of us financially. As you all know, we've been playing a neutral site football game for years. This year coming up, we do not have a neutral site game coming on the agenda, and that's a four to five million dollar loss to our department. So I would ask you to consider this at this time.
Thank you, Joe. Are there any questions? Are there any other questions?
Mr. Leva, is this an increase across the board, or are you doing a market adjustment of prices in the different sports and making adjustments as the market dictates?
Yes, thank you for that question. Our ticket office has done a comprehensive study over the past two years of the demand for tickets in certain areas of our stadium, and obviously the demand in some of the areas of the stadium is higher than in others. This proposal in front of you decreases the ticket price in areas of the stadium that have shown lesser demand and increases the ticket price in those areas where there's a bigger demand.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
Yes, sir, we do have some plans down the road to institute those neutral site games back on our schedule. However, we had a real outcry from our fans and our season ticket holders to play marquee games in Tiger Stadium, and we've done that by scheduling Texas to come in, we've got Clemson coming in down the road, and UCLA down the road. So we're trying to get a balance between the neutral site games and playing a marquee opponent, non-conference marquee opponent in Tiger Stadium.
Joe, have there been, has the SEC imposed any additional security requirements on us that's going to cost us any more money?
Yes, the SEC has imposed a requirement for us to provide metal detectors at all of our home football games, and frankly, that's probably going to expand to basketball and even baseball in the future, but immediately it only applies to football. That's going to cost us approximately two to two and a half million dollars a year. A, to buy the metal detectors is probably going to cost around 1.2 million dollars, and then, believe it or not, the manning of those detectors, it takes three people to monitor each one of those metal detectors, it's going to cost us over another million dollars for the labor to do that.
I have a question, Chairman. Where do we stand as far as other schools in the SEC that, particularly in the West, that we compete with on ticket prices and those sorts of things?
We're in the ballpark with all of the people in the SEC for the most part. We're right there in the ballpark with them all. We're not too high, we're not too low, we're right in the middle of the pack.
Are there any other questions?
I know there are some changes, I'm not on the committee, can I ask?
No, absolutely, please do.
I know there are some changes to the ticket policy itself, but my understanding is they're all just kind of cleanup, perfunctory, no changes in authorities other than giving you the ability to decrease tickets. Is that, am I correct?
Correct. Most of the changes in there are cosmetic, like changing the word from approval of the chancellor to president, because we don't have a chancellor anymore. So they're cosmetic changes in language. We do change, we do not change the requirement whenever we go up on ticket prices, we have to come to the Board. We do have been written in there that if we go down on a ticket price, we don't have to come to the full Board, we just have to go to the Chair and the Chair of the Athletic Committee to go down on ticket prices.
I understand that, because if you're going to lower tickets in a sport that's maybe not as public and high-profile as football is one thing, but you know, it's really kind of tough. We get to raise the ticket prices and get kicked around for it, and you get to lower them and get paddled on the spot.
Joe said he takes plenty of heat on other matters.
Are there any other questions? Thank you, Joe. Is there a motion to approve the resolution as presented? Is there a second? Any objection? Without objection, the motion is adopted. At this time, I'll accept
Thank you. Mr. Shadland, would you please convene the Finance Committee?
Yes, sir, thank you. Nicole, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Shadland?
Here.
Mr. Brown? Ms. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Lockett?
Here.
Mr. Mallett? Mr. Moore?
Here.
Ms. Werner?
Here.
Mr. Yarborough? Mr. Chairman, you have a call.
Okay, thank you. We have two items on the agenda today. One, the first, is a presentation and an update on alternative revenue and cost-saving opportunities, which of course is kind of an ongoing discussion that we'll always be having in the Finance Committee. In the essence of kind of clock management and time, there's no action items though there, and so if it is okay, we will defer that till our March meeting. And so I've talked to Dan and just asked him if he'll hold off on that. That leaves us with the only other item being to look at some tuition schedules for, that we need to approve for the Health Sciences Center in New Orleans. So Dan, if you would, present those for us.
Thank you, Mr. Shadland, members of the Board. The one action item that we do have for the Finance Committee today is a request from the Health Science Center in New Orleans to approve some tuition and fee amounts for new programs and implement fees relative to authority granted in House Bill 113 of the 2017 Legislative Session. There are really three sets of increases included in this request that are before you. The first is to set tuition and fees for two new programs. One is the Bachelor of Science in Public Health, and also for a Doctorate of Nursing Practice and Nurse Anesthesia. The second is to basically reset and consistently apply the same fee across different programs offered by the Health Science Center. And the third is a request to, for fee increases and in some cases decreases for nine academic programs at the Health Science Center. John Harmon is the Chief Financial Officer for the Health Science Center, and I'm turning it over to him to see if he has anything additional to add.
Thank you, Dan. Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. The only thing I would add is that it has been our approach to fees, student fees, over a number of years to be very strategic and targeted in how we make adjustments. We want to make certain that our programs and curriculums are priced consistently with our peer institutions across the southern regions. So rather than doing an adjustment across the board, because our programs are so different, we do look at the individual institutions in the other states for the same types of curriculums. And so that's why when we do adjustments, they don't hit all their programs, and they hit some of our programs a little more than others. So that's the purpose behind that. Any questions?
You received this information in regards to these schedules, and I would pause and see if anyone has any questions? I would entertain a motion to approve the items before you. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that concludes the matter, concludes the agenda of the Finance Committee. I would ask for a motion to adjourn. Do you have any? All in favor? Aye. Okay, thank you. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. We're gonna take the next item out of turn. Ms. Ms. Jones, would you convene the Athletic Committee?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Griffith, please call roll.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Anderson? Mr. Armeter?
Here.
Mr. Blossman?
Yes.
Mr. Brown? Mr. Dampf?
Here.
Mr. Starnes?
Here.
Mr. Woods?
Here.
Madam Chairman, you have a call.
Thank you, Nicole. At this time, I'll ask Joe to present on the item.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Board Members. Thank you. We would like you to consider an increase in ticket pricing for Athletic Department. The proposal that you have in front of you represents a 2.7 percent increase in ticket prices in Tradition Fund. We have not gone up in four years. We feel that this is necessary to fulfill the obligations that we have in front of us financially. As you all know, we've been playing a neutral site football game for years. This year coming up, we do not have a neutral site game coming on the agenda, and that's a four to five million dollar loss to our department. So I would ask you to consider this at this time.
Thank you, Joe. Are there any questions?
Mr. Leva, is this an increase across the board, or are you doing a market adjustment of prices in the different sports and making adjustments as the market dictates?
Yes, thank you for that question. Our ticket office has done a comprehensive study over the past two years of the demand for tickets in certain areas of our stadium. And obviously, the demand in some of the areas of the stadium is higher than in others. This proposal in front of you decreases the ticket price in areas of the stadium that have shown lesser demand, and increases the ticket price in those areas where there's a bigger demand.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
You know, I'm curious about the neutral site game. South, I think they're up on, I think they're great publicity for LSU. Is there any thought about going forward?
Yes, sir. We do have some plans down the road to institute those neutral site games back on our schedule. However, we had a real outcry from our fans and our season ticket holders to play marquee games in Tiger Stadium. And we've done that by scheduling Texas to come in. We've got Clemson coming in down the road, and UCLA down the road. So we're trying to get a balance between the neutral site games and playing a marquee opponent, non-conference marquee opponent, in Tiger Stadium.
Joe, have there been, has the SEC imposed any additional security requirements on us that's gonna cost us any more money?
Yes, the SEC has imposed a requirement for us to provide metal detectors at all of our home football games. And frankly, that's probably going to expand to basketball and even baseball in the future. But immediately, it only applies to football. That's gonna cost us approximately two to two and a half million dollars a year. A, to buy the metal detectors is probably gonna cost around 1.2 million dollars. And then, believe it or not, the manning of those detectors, it takes three people to monitor each one of those metal detectors. It's gonna cost us over another million dollars to, for the labor to do that.
I have a question, Chairman. Where do we stand as far as other schools in the SEC that, particularly in the West, that we compete with on ticket prices and those sorts of things?
We're in the ballpark with all of the people in the SEC for the most part. We're right there in the ballpark with them all. We're not too high, we're not too low. We're right in the middle of the pack.
Are there any other questions?
I know there are some changes, I'm not on the committee, can I ask?
No, absolutely. Please do.
I know there are some changes to the ticket policy itself, but my understanding is they're all just kind of cleanup, perfunctory, no changes in authorities other than giving you the ability to decrease tickets. Is that, am I correct?
Correct. Most of the changes in there are cosmetic, like changing the word from approval of the chancellor to president, because we don't have a chancellor anymore. So they're cosmetic changes in language. We do change the, we do not change the requirement whenever we go up on ticket prices, we have to come to the Board. We do have been written in there that if we go down on a ticket price, we don't have to come to the full Board, we just have to go to the Chair and the Chair of the Athletic Committee to go down on ticket prices.
I understand that, because if you're gonna lower tickets something in a, at a sport that's maybe not as public and high-profile as football is one thing, but you know, it's really kind of tough. We get to raise the ticket prices and get kicked around for it, and you get to lower them and get that on top.
Joe said he takes plenty of heat on other matters.
Yeah, you know.
Are there any other questions? Thank you, Joe. Is there a motion to approve the resolution as presented? Is there a second? Any objection? Without objection, the motion is adopted. At this time, I'll accept a motion to conclude the business of the Athletic Committee. Is there a second?
Second.
Any objection? Without objection, the committee is adjourned. Mr. Chairman, this concludes the business of the Athletic Committee.
Thank you very much. At this time...
Mr. Woods, would you please convene the Property and Facilities Committee?
Yes, sir. Ms. Griffith, please call the roll.
Mr. Woods? Mr. Brown? Mr. Shadland?
Here.
Mr. Lockett? Mr. Starnes?
Here.
Mr. Dampf? Mr. Mallett? Mr. Yarborough? Mr. Chairman, you have a call.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Tony Lombardo to please present the items for today's committee.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. Item number one, request from LSU Health Sciences Center in New Orleans to approve execution of Cooperate Endeavor Agreement and related documents pursuant to acquisition of Henkel Home Nursing Facility for operation as a geriatric teaching nursing facility.
Are there any questions on item one? If none, is there a motion to approve the request as presented?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and second. Motion is approved. Ms. Lombardo, item two, please.
Thank you. Item two is a request from LSU A&amp;M to approve an Act 959 construction project for roadway improvements at LSU Innovation Park.
Any questions on item two? Members of the committee? Is there a motion to approve the request as presented?
So moved.
Second? Any objection? Without objection, item two is approved. Ms. Lombardo, item three, please.
Item three is a request from LSU A&amp;M to lease land at LSU Innovation Park for construction of an incubator system center.
Okay, I know we have a detailed layout in your package, Board Members, Committee Members. Are there any questions on item three? Hearing none, is there a motion to ex? Moved and second. Without objection, it's approved. Item number four, please, Mr. Lombardo.
Item number four is a request from LSU Real Estate and Facilities Foundation to find an acceptable university purpose for a pre-development agreement with 1532 Tulane Partners Incorporated for the Charity Hospital Redevelopment Project Center. And at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Dan Laisel.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Mr. Woods, members of the Board. As you may remember, in September of 2017, the Board approved an intent to lease between the University and the LSU Real Estate Facilities Foundation to explore the redevelopment of the Charity Hospital property in New Orleans. As is highlighted in the Board Resolution itself, there has been an extensive process since that point, or since then, to get to this point, which is really bringing, after a very lengthy competitive process, a pre-development agreement with 1532 Tulane Partners to, for your consideration for approval. This is not the final approval that will come to the Board. That will be a lease document that will be brought back to the Board for consideration and approval six to 12 months from now. At this point, I would like to invite Mr. Rob Stewart and Mr. Jimmy Moran, who are with the LSU Real Estate and Facilities Foundation to come up and make some remarks. We also have our consultant with Jones Lang LaSalle here to take us through a presentation on the project, as well as the development team. So with that, I will turn it over to Rob and Jimmy.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm Rob Stewart. I'm the Chairman of the Real Estate Facilities Foundation and the immediate past Chair of the LSU Foundation. And we've been working over the past year and a half to make sure that this is a very transparent process, that we do seek public input. We've had a number of meetings. We have been very transparent in the selection of developers, almost to the point of coming close to competitiveness. But we feel very good about what we've accomplished, what we've done here. We've had the support of the Administration, Commissioner of Administration Jay Darden has been a member of our Project Management Committee and very involved in the ultimate selection process. Jimmy Moran is gonna take you through our process. As Dan said, we have JLL, which is probably the world leader in procurement consultant for public universities, who has worked with us closely in the process, as well as representatives of the 1532 Tulane, which is the selected developer, who'll provide you some updates on timing, as well as the continued seeking of public input as they work to put together the ultimate final project and final lease that will come back to you hopefully in 2019. So with that, I will turn it over to Jimmy.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing us to bring this project forward. A little brief history, particularly for some of the newer members to the Board. About 20 months ago, Dr. O'Yay, Dr. Larry O'Yay, head of the Health Science Center, came to the LSU Foundation and our Real Estate Facilities Foundation, which is now three years old. I was the original Chairman and one of the founders, and Rob has taken over as Chairman. But to talk about charity. Charity has, at that time, been vacant for, gosh, almost 11 or 12 years, and it was not an asset that LSU had as part of their strategic plan to move forward with. They asked us if we would help them get that property, find out what its highest and best use is, and get it to the market. We took the project on and came up with a fairly robust approach to it, because of the significance of this building historically, and particularly the significance of this building to the city of New Orleans. I know firsthand, there's a Board Member or two sitting here that was born at Charity Hospital. So that in itself makes it, and so many New Orleanians have. We initially decided to hire the Urban Land Institute, the premier group as it relates to land use, and we did. And we brought them in in November. That was after getting approval by this Board in September of 2017 to, with an intent to lease, essentially giving the Real Estate Facilities Foundation the rights and intent to lease this building. And we, at that time, disclosed everything we were gonna do. We hired ULI. They came in in November of 2017, a little over a year ago. Ten experts in the real estate world, these panels, these advisory service panels are the panelists themselves are volunteers. I've actually been on one or two myself over the years, other cities, but these were people from all over the country, experts in real estate. They came in, they spent five days in New Orleans, they interviewed over 80 major stakeholders in New Orleans to talk about what they thought about charity. So it was a very open and transparent process. At the end of the week that they were here, they issued their report verbally, and we got the written report about a year ago, January of last year. They recommended two things. They basically told us what this building could be used for and what it probably will never be used for, in their opinion. And they also gave us a process to follow. That process involved two committees, a Charity Hospital Project Management Committee, and a separate committee on the spirit of charity, basically talking about the entire charity district and what needed to be done on the district. We've worked very closely, these two committees have worked very closely together. So with that, we moved ahead with the RFQ and RFP process, as recommended by ULI. And to do that, we hired Jones Lang LaSalle. They are probably the premier organization, one of the premier real estate organizations in the world, but particularly in working on public-private projects, they have an expertise there that we thought was very important to get it to the process. Working with Jones Lang LaSalle, we did an RFQ, requesting qualifications. We had five or six people that responded to that. The Charity Hospital Project Management Committee, which was made up of stakeholders all throughout LSU, as well as the state. Commissioner of Administration Jay Darden was on that committee. So we wanted the state at the table, we wanted LSU at the table, senior officials of LSU, as well as members of the Real Estate Facilities Foundation. So it was a broad-based group. The RFQ, the RFP, had three finalists that we selected, and they submitted in their RFP. Ultimately, two of those three made submittals, and Charity Hospital Committee, rigorous process, many, many meetings, ultimately selected 1532 Tulane Partners to be, to do an intent to lease with, or essentially an option agreement with them to go to the next level. So that's where we are. We are at the stage of approving that 1532 partners and the agreement that we've negotiated with them. They will have 180 days plus two option periods of 90 days apiece to get their deal put together. And ultimately, at that point in time, we'll come back to this Board for hopefully final approval of what will be a successful redevelopment of Charity Hospital. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to the folks at JLL. They've got a brief presentation in terms of the process that they went through, just so you understand exactly what we went through to select this particular partner.
Thanks, Jimmy. Hi, I'm Chris Roth with JLL. This is Brian Carroll. We've been with the project since the beginning. We interviewed with the Real Estate Facilities Foundation, and we're selected. I think it's important to note for two things. One is objectivity, and two is transparency. I personally have been working in federal, state, and local, state includes higher education procurements, for about 20 years. Some of what we have to show you today simply, you can go on, simply details a lot of what Jimmy and Rob have spoken to. The ULI study was very important. Not only did it interview a lot of people and reach out, but it gathered a lot of information and set some scenarios that may be financially feasible to bring charity into commerce. We provided that to all respondents as they tried to qualify themselves and as they were part of the competition. This is a flow chart that you see there, but what it tells you is, we went to the market nationally, internationally in some cases. We qualified firms. Those firms then advanced and submitted proposals to us. The Board was able to see the down-selected firms in face-to-face interviews. And then we, of course, ran a best and final, because competition's important. We wanted to get the best situation and transaction that we could for the Real Estate Facilities Foundation. The bottom layer right there is where we are today. We've spent the last about four months working and developing the pre-development agreement. I would characterize it as building trust. As many of you know, the charity project had been out in the market before, so this was kind of the second time out. Things were different this time. One thing, we were involved, and we ran this process very rigorously and marketed it like we would any public or private process. With respect to transparency, and Brian can add a bit to this, but I can tell you all from my experience doing both federal and private procurements, I haven't seen anything as transparent as this procurement. We actually completed press releases and distributed components of proposers, submitted documents to the public on several occasions. Next slide, please. Joe Stebbins from 1532 will go into this with a bit more detail, but what I wanted to point out is a couple things. One, Tulane University is an anchor tenant with office space and also very interested in some components of the housing for their students. Without looking at the I-Chart text here, two things that aren't there are also very important. One of the very complicating factors of this procurement was City Hall and the Surge and Water Board. Those are not in the scope of the selected offer. They were seen as too complicated, and JLL agreed with that and made our recommendations to the Board to select 1532. With that, I'll turn it over to Brian on some detail on where we are with the pre-development agreement.
So there's a lot of information on the next couple slides. I'm not gonna go through all of it. I'll just point out a couple of key components here. As Jimmy mentioned, effectively, what will occur over the next six to 12 months is allowing the developer to go through a pre-development period that will allow them to do the due diligence that's required on a $250 million investment. And so over the next six months, they'll go through and do environmental remediate, environmental work, studies, secure tenancy, and generally get the development in place, securing, funding, all of those sorts of things. After that six-month period, they can do one of two things. They can either close the development, the pre-development period, sign the ground lease and move into development, or they have two additional three-month extension options, both of which come with deposits. At that point, they're non-refundable. So over that 12-month period, that's gonna be their task, is to move through the pre-development of the building. Couple of key final lease terms here. Again, 99-year ground lease, which will be negotiated during the pre-development agreement. That will come with $250,000 a year in annual rent, and an $11.85 million upfront capitalized lease payment at the outset of the ground lease signature. And finally, for approvals, you know, again, we're not asking for approval of a ground lease today that has yet to be negotiated. We're simply looking to advance the pre-development agreement, which will govern the time period between now and when the ground lease is signed. And with that, I'd like to throw it over to Joseph Stebbins. He's representative from 1532 Tulane Partners, who will talk about their actions over the next 12 months.
First off, I'd like to thank the Board for being the selection in this process. We're very proud to have gone through the process and been selected. We're very committed to this whole process, very committed to the community. If you're, in our proposal, we have public outreach meetings scheduled. Our schedule's a little off from the original submittal because of the process of going through this, which is fine. I agree, it needs to be an open process. We intend to move very quickly. Actually, we're gonna be in the building next week, starting environmentals, starting through due diligence as far as title work, which given that the building's been there since the 1930s and before that, it's been a hospital site since the 1850s, we're sure that there's gonna be some interesting title work to be done. That being said, we're also committed to try and get this process moved as quickly as possible, get the building back into commerce and get the area moving. We've met with Greater New Orleans Foundation, who helmed the spirit of charity. We're working with them to keep the communication lines open and to keep the partnership that we have with you guys moving and keep everybody informed what's going on. Obviously, it's important to the city, it's important to the LSU community and the whole region to get this done and moving and back into commerce. If anybody has any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Any questions from members of the committee, of the Board?
I would ask this question, Moran, if you could maybe just share with us a little bit, if you looked at all the proposals, kind of what, how the choices kind of stood out and what led?
It's a really good question. For those of you who don't know, I've been a real estate developer here in the state for 45 years, so I've built a lot of large projects myself all around the state of Louisiana. And so, and I've been evaluated a lot of times about projects that particularly that touch the public. So the most important things, one of the reasons we like this team, a couple of reasons. Number one, Joseph is from New Orleans, has been there, has operated both in the public and private sector for a long time. His firm has a good reputation. Secondly, capital, the money it takes to do a $250 million project. We had to sit down and really kind of qualify that, assuming that they were able to get their deal put together, would they? Did they have the capital sources available? His financial partner is very strong, extremely strong, and someone who invests in these types of historic buildings. He's done them pretty much all over the country. So we were impressed with that. I think the third thing, that buildings like this get built, because they're historic, there's gonna be historic tax credits, there's the new Opportunity Zone tax law that just passed last year, so there's some tax benefits that developers get when they renovate. So there's some tax benefits that developers get when they renovate or redo a historic building. But there's real equity going into this building. There's real money out of the developer's property, pocket equity going into that. And that was probably one of the most compelling reasons to select them. They've got the capital sources on one end. On the other end, they're not trying to build this and do this with just strictly funny money, but they're trying to do it with real equity. And they had the most compelling argument. Their argument was not, you know, TIF legislation is a very controversial thing, particularly in the city of New Orleans right now, and they basically came forward and said, "We're not going to use tax increment financing." It's a very sensitive issue in New Orleans right now. Secondly, they, their approach to the bill, and there was no dependency. You know, we had another proposal that said that we got to get City Hall to move into the Charity Hospital building. These guys said, "We're not going to have any tenant contingencies." And quite frankly, that's not where we're going. They have since then made a deal with Tulane, which Tulane University has announced to take about a third of this building. That's a huge anchor, particularly since Tulane is right across the street. So we've been impressed with the kind of tenants that they've come up with. Whether City Hall comes forward or not is not really, quite frankly, is not really a contingency here. So we love their leasing plan. It's going to be a mixed-use project. It's going to have residential and office. Tulane's going to do both residential and office in the building, and there will be others. Some retail down on the bottom end, badly needed in the medical district right now. There is no decent retail in that. So their overall plan was also most consistent with what the Urban Land Institute told us that this building should be. So bottom line is, they were the clear winner. And by the way, they won the vote unanimously of the committee. And so it was, they were the clear winner in the clubhouse.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Any members of the board? Mr. Chairman, let me make a quick statement. First of all, LSU remains committed to robust public input on the Charity Hospital development in New Orleans. As Chair of the Facilities Committee, we will convene another meeting February 15th in the city of New Orleans. And I want to take some time to thank Ms. Hayes for making the effort to come up here and speak today. But we will be bringing another meeting to the city of New Orleans on February 15th. And I'm asking my fellow committee members to attend that meeting. I am pleased to say that the development team, 1532 Partners LLC, has already outlined a robust public input process in their submission to the Real Estate Facilities Foundation. And this public input process is scheduled to take place as part of their development rollout now that we have a pre-development agreement in place. LSU will hold the selected developers accountable to execute that public process and expect they will announce the details of that process soon. During the Spirit of Charity Innovation District process led by the Greater New Orleans Foundation, three public meetings took place in New Orleans, July 25th, August 13th, August 28th, where citizens participated and facilitated discussions and working meetings to provide feedback to Development District of the Spirit of Charity Hospital, Charity District. While those meetings weren't focused on the charity building itself, because the public was very interested in giving feedback on that topic, at each of those three public meetings, there was a section of the program dedicated specifically to allowing the public to give feedback on the future redevelopment of Charity Hospital. In all three of those meetings, that did take place. Representatives from LSU REF and 1532 Partners attended all three meetings of the Spirit of Charity Innovation District public meetings in New Orleans, and they heard from the public and took those thoughts and recommendations firsthand. I know personally that Rob Stewart from the REF attended many of those meetings himself. And I want to acknowledge his leadership on this as well as that of Jimmy Moran from the REF. I think they've done a great job and have a tremendous track record in developing properties in and around New Orleans and throughout the state on behalf of LSU. They have worked incredibly hard to bring this, they have worked incredibly hard to bring this project to life, starting with the Urban Land Institute Design Process back in 2017. That really kicked this whole thing off. That public process also concluded with a public meeting in November of 2017. So Mr. Chairman, I'm just trying to highlight several things that took place over the process getting to today. One of the things that really excited me about this particular development team is that they committed to the City of New Orleans DBE program. I know that's important to you, Chair, and this board. And we've had much discussion on that as it relates to LSU, as we leverage the power of the university to make a positive impact on communities where LSU has a presence. And certainly, this charity project is a major part of that. And this developer has committed to do that. 35% DBU requirement from a construction standpoint, we'll have some DBE equity in the project as well. I know the developers are working on that. And they'll come forward with additional information as we move through the process. And on a personal note, Mr. Chair, I actually was one of those board members who were born in Charity Hospital along with six of my siblings. So it's personal to me. I understand how important that is to members of the New Orleans community and how important it is, quite frankly, to the state. And I am firmly convinced that this developer understands that, the sensitivity of it, and I think they're committed, and we're looking forward to moving forward with them. And with that, if they're...
Well, I would like to make one quick comment. Coming in late as a board member on this project, I can't look enough at Jimmy Moran and his expertise. Jimmy and I go way back and have been friends a long time before I even ever was thought of about this board, I can tell you that, just our connection through LSU. But I tell you, his expertise in this arena is second to none, and his confidence in the group certainly makes it very easy for me to support this 100%. Jimmy, we thank you for your help and dedication for this project and for LSU. Thank you.
Absolutely.
... for that mix as well, because we have a lot of talent, and great folks to work with.
Thank you. Any other comment?
I would just want to...
Blake?
Yeah, I would walk...
Just want to comment, one little tidbit of information. In talking to the Urban Land Institute, they didn't have this in their report, but I've kept in touch with them. I'm a member, a governor of the Urban Land Institute. They tell me they think this is the largest historic building in America that is sitting vacant. It's a million square feet. It is the largest historic building in America that is sitting vacant. And I guess I make that point in the sense that this is not just a New Orleans project, it's not just a Louisiana project. This thing has, the money that's coming to this project is coming internationally. It is a national figure, particularly by getting ULI involved. And so, a lot of eyes on us, quite frankly, in terms of repurposing charity. And I think it's probably one of the most important, quite frankly, in my 45-year career, is one of the most important buildings that I've ever had anything to do with, and that's why we have taken the care that we have. And we've got a great partner. I think he's going to be successful. I think he's going to keep us informed. And I believe the public process, now that we've, because all we're really doing now is selecting that partner. Once that partner's selected, then the public process will begin again with their leadership, working with the board of supervisors and with the Real Estate Facilities Foundation.
Correct.
And I think they're going to be impressed with the way they go about their business.
Good, thank you. Blake?
Well, one, I would just echo Jimmy. Thank you, and Rob, thank you all both for your efforts here. So we would be in a pre-development or due diligence phase, then just thinking long next steps, then the lease would come back for approval here at the board. And then assuming we get to that point, what's the timeframe on development that we would be looking at to put the building back into commerce?
Well, one of the things we have staring at us is this opportunity zone legislation that has got tremendous tax benefits for essentially rolling capital gains in. There is a 2016 deadline for a seven-year threshold that you have to meet. I don't want to, I'll put everybody asleep if we go into the mechanics of it. But to meet that deadline, we have to be underway in some form or fashion productively by the end of this year. Okay? So the group's been very helpful in trying to work with us to craft this pre-development agreement so that we can get this underway and get this project moving and start with substantial work by the end of the year. We're going to move through title, the standard due diligence you're going to do with any real estate transaction. We're also going to be working on plans, specifications for the exterior of the building, windows, working with the State Historic Preservation Office. We've already had them out for a number of meetings. They're very enthusiastic about it. We've done other buildings with their input very successfully. We're going to also work with asbestos abatement and the environmental issues with the building. Of course, everybody knows it's an old building. There are a lot of things that are, you know, probably lurking in the wings as far as that goes. So we're going to get through that whole process so that the first step will be most likely asbestos abatement, interior cleanup and demolition of hardscape that was left from the cleanup that was done previously. And then we're going to move through plans and specifications, particularly as far as historic portions of the building. SHPO has identified a number of them, and LSU also wants to chime in on some. I know you guys have some meetings that are going to be going on about that. So we can do a very sensitive protection of those areas and restoration.
If you get started by the end of the year, when do you think you'll begin to open this building?
We have, the construction schedule's 20 months, currently budgeted at $200 million. That means that we'll be spending $10 million a month. It's a pretty aggressive schedule. My contractor's already kind of, Alan's taking a big gulp and he's rolling up his sleeves and ready to do it. That means essentially, when we get underway, we'll be moving about $330,000 a day of work in that building, has to be in place and acceptable. One of the reasons we've chosen to, as much as possible, make it a union job, we want to try and train as many people as we can. My goal personally as a New Orleanian is to not create jobs, I want to create careers. It doesn't do any good just to give somebody a job, because what do you do when this job ends? But if I can get them trained, we're working with the AFL-CIO to get training programs in place, because if, when we're finished, because we're going to finish, where do you go from there? Well, you can go to a union, union's got jobs if you want to become a licensed master electrician or whatever. That's really one of my chief goals, because that makes long-term significant impact at the city that does to be the most good. I mean, it's great to have the big project, but it's one thing. You need to make the series. You need to start the ball rolling.
Thank you. Any further questions? Remi?
I was going to make a motion.
Can I ask a quick?
Yes.
We talked about, and I appreciate what Chairman Woods said about the having a rollout. I know that the next phase of this has a public input portion. I think it would be helpful for the community if, when we convene our property and facilities meeting in New Orleans on February 15th, if we could at least have an idea of a schedule for the public rollout, for the rollout of the public input part of it. I think that'd be helpful information to include in that, our next committee meeting.
And that's not a problem. We already have kind of a framework. It's not on this particular schedule, but we can easily adapt it. One of the other things I would like to do is at that meeting, I'm going to get with the contractor, I'm going to put him on the thing, but I would also, I want to get him there with, you know, with the AFL-CIO so we can start getting people in to get training, because we're going to need everybody, it's going to be an all-hands-on-deck thing, there's a lot of work to do. So yeah...
One thing too, obviously, quite frankly, these guys weren't selected until a couple of months ago. And they're not the developer of this building until this vote occurs. And I know this organization, they're great. I think you're going to begin this, then and only then will they come to the surface, because obviously they've been competing on this. So I think even before your February the 15th meeting, you're going to see a good bit of public stuff that's going to start coming out of these guys now that they're in control of the deal and of the building. So, and we'll work closely, the Real Estate Foundation will work closely with them, but I don't think you're going to be disappointed with the public process between now and the time they go hard on this deal.
It seems like all of those pieces in place, I don't doubt that for a minute. And I do think it would be helpful, if to the extent we can, to be able to outline specifically for the community to the extent we can, the opportunities for that public input when we convene next month.
Not a problem.
Thank you.
And I also thank Mr. Chair, and I failed to mention it in my statement, there's a robust component that deals with low to mild income housing that we know is very important to the mayor and city leaders, as well as a component to bring, work with the city's workforce development agency, to bring labor into the project from, you know, habitually unemployed folks. So it's a tremendous opportunity, again, leveraging LSU's leadership to make a positive impact in the community. So thank you very much. We look forward to working with you. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the resolution as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to move to approve, I don't know, the four on the committee's agenda and authorize a request from the LSU Real Estate Facilities Foundation to find an acceptable university purpose for a pre-development agreement with 1532 Tulane Partners Incorporated for the Charity Hospital Redevelopment Project Center.
Thank you, Mr. Storms.
I'll second that motion.
Second by Mr. Shadlane. Without objection, the motion is adopted. At this time, I will accept the motion to conclude the Properties and Facilities Committee meeting. Move to second.
Second.
Mr. Chair, our business is finished for today. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Woods. At this time, we will recess for lunch. The time is 12:23. We will reconvene at 1:00 PM.
1:00 PM.
Good afternoon, everyone. The meeting will now come to order. Ms. Griffith, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Ms. Warner?
Here.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Anderson? Mr. Armeter?
Here.
Mr. Blossman?
Here.
Mr. Brown? Mr. Shadowland? Mr. Damp?
Here.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Lockett?
Here.
Mr. Mallett?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Woods?
Here.
Mr. Yarborough? Okay, Mr. Chan, we have a one.
Thank you, Ms. Griffith. Chancellor Clark, I understand that we have Megan Cruz and Lauren Hill, name of one of my favorite musical artists, here with us today. Would you please introduce these students?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We indeed do have Lauren and Megan here. In the interest of time, I'll let them introduce themselves. Let me just tell you very briefly that the invocation is going to be given by Lauren Hill. You saw last night the Student Success Center. And what a great success that is. And Lauren is one of the people who works on the staff there as a student. And she also has taken advantage of the services of the Student Success Center. And so she'll be able to tell you something about that. Megan Cruz, who will do the pledge. She's the president of our Student Government Association. But she also has many other talents. There was this morning our Veterans Resource Center for the ribbon cutting. But back on Veterans Day, she sung the Star Spangled Banner in a windy rainy day in high heels out in the middle of the campus on grass. And her high heels were sinking into the grass as she was singing. to do what they're just going to do right now. If you both will come forward.
Could you please bow your heads if you so may choose? Dear God, today we ask you to bless this meeting and the tasks ahead. I thank you for those that give themselves to better the LSU system, the community, and our state. We ask for blessings upon them and that their decisions be guided by wisdom and vision to ensure the future of our youth and community. Please guide our leaders to make choices that benefit the common good, use resources wisely, and recognize the responsibility to the past and future. We ask these things of you, O loving God, amen.
Please remain standing. I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hello, and good afternoon. Like the tangible mention, my name is Lauren Hill. And unfortunately, I cannot break out into song at this very moment. I am a sophomore who is majoring in chemistry while also obtaining a minor in physics. So, I want to start off by saying that LSU S wasn't always my first choice. Like every other high school senior, I wanted to move away from home, kind of do my own thing. But in the end, my spirit along with the help of relatives who were also LSU S alumni, I ended up staying here, home. In June 2017 is when I decided to stay in Shreveport and I was able to receive a scholarship on the last day that the applications were due. Thus began my first semester in college. To my surprise, I ended up coming to a university that challenged me in ways I could have never imagined. My first semester was slightly rocky, but luckily, my professors were there to help me every step of the way. This past semester, I joined Chemistry Club while also obtaining a position as a tutor. There, I tutor physics, chemistry, and trigonometry. Towards the end of the semester, I also had the opportunity to interview with a doctor at the LSU Health Science Center in order to conduct biomedical research. With that being said, I had to pick between this position or leaving the Success Center. Ultimately, I decided that if I was chosen for this position at the Health Center that I would decline because of my job at the Success Center and how I love it so much. I want to brag about it real quickly. It's a godsend. It's amazing. I love that we have it because it gives us the opportunity as peers to teach others in ways that professors may not be able to convey to the student for them to be able to understand it. And it gives the student a more comfortable atmosphere. It's more intimate. And that way, they're able to learn, understand, and be less anxious. Therefore, not only did I find a great college, but I also discovered my second home and family. We grow together, laugh together, and yes, even sometimes cry together. But it's a journey that we all take together, and I am proud to be a part of it. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Megan Cruz, and I am a 22-year-old senior here with a major in marketing and a concentration in advertising design. It always makes me laugh whenever Chancellor Clark introduces me because he just beams with pride like a proud dad. And I love it. Thank you so much for that. And I'll get to a little bit more about why I appreciate that so much. But first, I want to talk about what LSU S means to me before I get to my role here. I'm actually a first-generation college student. My parents didn't go to college. I am one of 10 siblings, and I'm the first of my siblings to go to college. So, getting ready to prepare for... So, preparing to go to college was like blind leading the blind. And for a long time, I was unsure if college was even an option for me. So, the fact that LSU S was so bountiful in the scholarships and has been so helpful in providing what I needed to be able to prepare for my future has been phenomenal, and I am so grateful. And now, thankfully, I not only am in college, but I have a full ride through the scholarships that have been available to me as SGA President through the Red River Scholarships, through TOPPS, and as an orientation leader as well, which is all incredible. Because the university gave so much to me, I felt it was only right to grow where I'd been planted and give back as best as I could. So, I serve as an orientation leader. This is, I'm very fortunate that next year will be my second year to serve. I serve in the marketing department as a student worker. So, thank you, Windell. He's wonderful, so hilarious. And I serve as SGA President as well along with Ms. LSU S Pageant Committee Member and the Ms. Black and Gold Pageant Committee Member as well. So, I stay very busy. But it's been wonderful because having all of these different capacities that I stay involved, it's enabled me to understand different areas where students can even further their education and be even more well-established here in our university. And I think that's helped me so much with the serving as Student Government President. I had the opportunity to serve as Senator for three years, and then this past year have been able to serve as President. And seeing the transformation that LSU S has overcome, not just this past year, but over the past four years, has been unbelievable. And now, being able to serve in a small way has been so great. So, I'm grateful for now being able to have the food pantry, our Veterans Resource Center. And then, as my term continues, also continuing the conversation for meal plan alternatives and then also ways to keep our campus safe through our different lighting. But it's been wonderful, and I am so, so grateful. Not only is LSU S, as Lauren mentioned, home quite physically. I graduated just right over the bridge. But it's home because of our faculty. It's home because I'm not just a face, but a name. It's home because I have a proud dad who introduces me with a beaming face, and I could not be more grateful.
Megan?
Megan?
Megan? Megan? Did you, you said you work with the, you said Ms. Black and Gold Pageant?
Yes.
Could you explain to everyone what that is?
So, one of our fraternities...
Which one?
That's a great question. I don't remember off the top of my head. You've got to cut me a break here. I'm involved quite a bit, so I'm like, oh, sure, I'll help. But... Is that yours? Is it yours? So, which one is it?
Alpha Phi. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The faculty person who's going to give you their hello is Carlos Spate. Carlos is one of our chairholders here at LSU Shreveport, and we're very fortunate. We have over 50, over 50 endowed chairs or professorships for a faculty of about 120, ten track continued faculty. That's a very high proportion. And our LSU S Foundation has been terrific in helping us to make that possible. And so Carlos is in a funded chair. Excuse me. And his was created because of the great work he was doing. But it's in the programs of La Prep, as it's called. And it's focused on the K-12 for STEM education. And he's an innovator in what he has done. He had begun the program with a fellow friend of ours who has passed away not long after I left in 94. But it began in 92, Carlos, correct? While I was still here as the business school dean. And you're going to hear some statistics here that will amaze you, absolutely amaze you. Dr. Carlos Spate, please.
Hi. The program he's talking about, La Prep, you should have a card near you. It explains a little bit about the program. Looks like this. Well, I have plenty in my office if you'd like one and you don't have one. But let me tell you about, a little bit about this program. The program's called La Prep. The goal of the program is, first of all, it's a program in mathematical, the mathematical sciences that's been on this campus since 92. And that's 27 years. This will be the 28th consecutive summer. The goal of the program is to motivate and educate its participants. Number one, to go to college, that's our primary goal. And number two, to major in math or science. So, it's a STEM program. We've had, in the 27 years, in the 27 consecutive summers of La Prep, we've had over 800 participants. Eighty percent have been minority students. Sixty percent have been female. Fifty percent will be first-generation college students. And approximately 70% come from neighborhoods that are economically disadvantaged. We've been very successful. We've received numerous awards. For example, the Shreveport City Council on two occasions has given us an award for our contribution to math and science in Shreveport. The Mathematical Association of America gave us an award for our contribution to mathematics in Louisiana. We've received an award from the Jacqueline Kennedy Onassis Foundation, National Science Foundation, Department of Energy, Department of Education, the Governor's Office, the Louisiana State Legislature. We've been featured on C-SPAN. A documentary was actually made of our program and shown on national TV by the American Broadcasting Company. But I think the greatest indicator of our success is that our tracking records indicate... Now, we've lost some, but the ones that we can track, the tracking records indicate, our tracking records indicate that none of our participants have dropped out of high school. All once graduating from high school have gone on and gone to college with more than 80% majoring in math or science. So, we're really proud of that. Now, due to our success, about 10 years ago, we expanded La Prep. We started two pre-La Prep programs. One is in Mansfield, Louisiana, and one is here in Shreveport. And this is a math and science program designed for students during the summers after their fourth grade and after the fifth grade. Once the student completes that program, they're automatically eligible to come to La Prep, which is the program I'm talking about, which again is a two-year program. And once they're through with that, we have a post-La Prep program, which is called La Pixel Academy. And this directed, it is directed by Alan Gorsey, who's a faculty member here at LSU Shreveport. But in this particular program, they actually make a video game. But what I like so much about it is not the fact to make a video game, which they love doing, but they learn some of the beginning techniques that are used in other areas such as medical research, military intelligence, and bioinformatics. So, it's a great program, and it's been very, very successful. But we're not through with the students then. Now, those are the programs that we sponsor. Those are the programs that we raise money for. The two pre-La Prep programs, the La Prep program and the post-La Prep program. But when a student finishes La Prep, he or she is automatically eligible to go to another program at the med school called the Jump Start Program. And this program, the students will actually get paid. And they will do research with PhDs and MDs. And then, we're still not through with them. Because if a student wants to, then he or she can come to LSU Shreveport, where we will give them a La Prep Scholarship, which is $500 a semester for four consecutive years. So, we're real proud of what's going on with our program. Now, it's an academic program. Academics are stressed, but it's not all work and no play, as you can see if you have the card. We have, we go on field trips, for example, on Friday to try to enhance what's been taught in the classroom. We have plenty of activity periods where they can let off steam, play basketball on our basketball court, or go swimming in our indoor swimming pool or play pool downstairs. You saw some pool tables, probably. And do other activities. We have plenty, plenty of guest speakers, at least three a week. We try to have a minimum of three a week. And for two types of speakers, motivational speakers, because we want to motivate them to stay in high school and go to college. And we also have a lot of speakers in the different math and science disciplines, like engineers and doctors and nurses and things, people like that, because we want them to see what it's like to be in those areas. Because as I said, a lot of them will be first-generation college students. So, that's La Prep. That's what it's all about. Thank you for giving me your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the board meeting held on December 7, 2018. Those minutes were previously provided to the members of the board. Are there any questions? Hearing no questions, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Having been moved in second, is there any opposition? Hearing no opposition, the minutes are approved. We'll now move to the next item on the agenda. Number four, personnel actions requiring board approval. The board has in front of them a set of personnel actions. I trust everyone has been able to look through the personnel actions, and we certainly discussed them during the committee meetings earlier today. Does anyone have any questions about the personnel actions that require our approval? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve these personnel actions.
So moved.
Is there a second? It's been moved in second, as by Chairlet Warner. Any objection to the personnel actions requiring board approval? Hearing no objection, the motion is adopted. Is that a protest supervisor stuff?
Mr. Damp is trying to take credit. Mr. Damp is trying to take credit for it.
Mr. Damp is causing trouble, as usual. Number five, reports from the Council of Staff Advisors and the Council of Faculty Advisors. Ms. Milliken is not able to be with us today, so I understand that Dr. Ken McMillan will pull double duty.
Thank you, Chair Williams, members of the board. Yes, I'll do my best. I'll give the Council of Faculty Advisors' report. First, the faculty and our respective committees are involved in several, what we believe are important issues and advances for campus. One is academic technology and what we really need in that regard, recycling efforts on campus, vendor and contractor responsiveness, administrative position searches. And you're all aware that we do have several interim vice presidents now and several interim deans that those positions will be filled and the faculty will be very involved in those searches. Our library committee in particular is working very closely with Dean Wilder on library cereals. Our Elsevier contract is coming due the end of 2019. And because of the increasing costs of those, we're trying to work with Dean Wilder so we can mitigate some of those costs and still provide the research materials that our faculty need. And last but not least, we've cooperated very extensively with Academic Affairs on many policy and permanent memorandum revisions and those statements. So, that concludes my Council of Faculty Advisors' report. I am privileged to give the Council of Staff Advisors' report and primarily because Faculty Senate and Staff Senate are working collaboratively on lots of different areas. The Council of Staff Advisors with President Tammy Milliken did meet on January 18 and make their plans for this coming year. Most of the conversation was on Staff Appreciation Week and how we can actually move that across multiple campuses. We're working jointly on protocol for death of a university employee because there is no such protocol in place now, yet that becomes highly visible in some cases. And so, we feel that a protocol would be not only appropriate, but very meaningful to all those involved. And last but not least, PM 37 on the Council of Faculty Advisors, the Council of Staff Advisors was amended to rotate officers among the various campuses. So, I appreciate the opportunity to give both reports today. The staff are very active, the faculty are very active, so I'd be willing to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Alexander, would you please present your report to the board?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman. This is relatively short, but very important. A couple of points I'd like certainly the outside world to know. On the flagship campus continues its stellar performance in science. And if you remember, 2017, the scientific discovery of the year was an LSU collaborative and at LIGO with the gravitational wave, which is still being discussed throughout scientific laboratories, throughout the scientific world today. I'm pleased to say that one of the top scientific stories in 2018 by CNN selected Tabby Star as one of the top 10 space stories of 2018. Tabby Star is named after LSU Department of Physics and Astronomy Assistant Professor Tabitha Boyagin. And she is the only woman to have a star named after her that we know to this day. This star flickers in a mysterious way and has, that has intrigued researchers and inspired citizen scientists for years and years. So, when you look up and you see one that's flickering in a way that you never thought imaginable, that's Tabby Star, and it's named after an LSU scientist. The LSU family of institutions also remains committed to the success of our student veterans coming back to us from all over the world and coming to Louisiana from other states. coming back to us from all over the world and coming to Louisiana from other states after having served their time in the armed forces. At the main campus, where we started a Veterans Center, a Veterans Center chapter five years ago, among fifteen hundred other Veterans Center, the Veterans Center on the Baton Rouge Campus, the flagship campus, received the Chapter of the Year Award from the Student Veterans Association of America. And just this morning, right here at LSU S, we cut the ribbon on a brand-new Veterans Center. And what we've discovered is, once there's a Veterans Center, we find out how many veterans we really have on our campus, because it's hard to self-report when there isn't a place to go to, to, to seek one-stop shop for veterans' benefits and all the type of benefits that are specifically attributable to our veterans. Once we did this, we went from, once we set up a Veterans Center on the main campus, we discovered we had a lot more than fifty veterans that had been self-identified. We have over five hundred veterans and eight hundred family members that are a part of the Veterans Center on the main campus. So I commend LSU S for the ribbon cutting, and I think you'll be surprised here at how many veterans are actually on campus that have served our country so well. We have a number of searches. As Dr. McMillan pointed out, the LSU E search, we will begin that search. As you know, interim Bill Crowe is serving, serving it in a wonderful way at LSU Unis, and we'll be kicking that search off on February seventh. Vice President of Communications Search is underway. The VP, the Associate VP of Research, which impacts all of our campuses, will begin soon. So a number of these searches are very important. Government shutdown impacts. We're not entirely sure how deep this may be, but we do know that payments, some of the payments to our researchers and scientists are getting delayed, and many of the impacted areas, particularly NSF and other areas, funding agencies, are accruing a large number of applications that basically are being put on hold for future review. And what we learned in the, in the mid-nineties at the last government shutdown is that tended to delay the review of our faculty and other applicant, grant applications up to six to eight months, just because the duration necessary needed to review these applications. We do not know the full extent of this. We also want our students to know, if, if they are asked to be, to have their incomes verified for Title IV direct student aid, that to please see our financial aid officers because the IRS is shut down. And the Department of Education is open, and if all they require is Department of Education loans, grants that flow through them, and they've already had their income verified, then things should still flow smoothly. It's the students that are being asked, and oftentimes that are new students or transfer students or other students, that are being asked to have income verified by the IRS. And those are the ones that we've asked our chancellors to be extremely flexible with in terms of purging students because they haven't been able to pay or haven't received their financial aid. And once again, we need just everybody in our campuses to be very, very flexible. And finally, I'd like to thank Larry Clark and his team for the wonderful hospitality that we've received here. Larry, I can tell you, the amount of technology that you've been able to put into campus is extraordinary, and your team has done an outstanding job in campus maintenance, which the campus looks great, and it seems like this campus is on a roll of up to seven thousand students. And we certainly appreciate even more this morning, the purple and gold balloon, the air balloon, that was outside with LSU S to send quite a billboard to wherever it goes. And we thank the, the individual who has done that for us. And so, thank you. And Larry, if you want to just briefly comment?
We certainly thank you for the fact that you chose to come here. We know it's a long drive. We heard that from the first, or the second speaker this morning, how long it is to come this far. We thank you. I've got to thank our team. I think Kim Ramsey is right there. If you'll stand up, please. Kim's assistant to the chancellor. She oversaw the team, but with our IT people, it was all the people, buildings and grounds. I mean, it was just a fantastic team effort. So I, the IT crew back there, thank you for all you've done. They put up with me when I came in and wanted the shades just a certain way and all these kinds of, I can't help myself. But they were terrific in making this here for you. You know, I want to come back very quick, if I might, and I won't be long, because I had a chance this morning. And Kim says, maybe I could just highlight something, a couple of things very quickly, and I will. I want to come back to the Student Success Center just for a moment, what Lauren talked about. We sit on a cotton plantation here. When I came here in eighty-one, I didn't understand that. I wanted to have an easement, to keep this as a cotton, you know, a cotton field that's just right up there. And they were saying, are you nuts? That doesn't represent what, you know, all the issues of a cotton field. And we have had a long struggle over time of having the diversity that we have wanted on campus. And we have not had, over time, with Southern University Shreveport, as strong a relationship in terms of student transferring as we ideally would have wanted to have. And when I was over at Southern University, ten weeks ago or so, there was a professor I knew for my first time, being the business school dean here, and she said, "We now encourage our students to consider coming to LSU Shreveport and not to Wiley College across the Texas Line, or not to Grambling if they want to stay more in this area versus going to Southern University in Baton Rouge." That's why, because we can trust the fact that they can come to the Success Center, they go there, they're welcomed, they're embraced there, they feel like there's an opportunity for them, and it's allowing them to make the transition. And our students are transferring over, love what's happening there. That is so important for our Success Center, that every student has a front door. And as an urban metropolitan university, which we are, we don't get all of our students at the freshman level, nor would we expect to. And we have to have multiple front doors, and we have to have an ability to bring these students in, and we're working to have true articulation agreements. And so, ones where students don't lose a single credit hour. And we have established some of those with Southern University, we're working with Bossier Parish Community College to make those happen, true accreditation. We, you can accept hours, but do the hours count for the degree? Hours count for degree, so we have them aligned, so they can come over here. The faculty here are doing a great job of doing that, and Success Center is really what makes it happen. And that Success Center, as some of you have heard me say before, came because the Student Government Association supported a fee increase to be dedicated towards that purpose. That's why it exists. The students do it for students. And so, that's one of the things that we're very, very pleased and proud of. We, Golly has had to leave, but I've got to tell you that everything that Chancellor Golly and I do, we look, it's as if we think about it as we were one university here. We're not, we're two different. And sometimes we get lost in the shadow of LSU House Shreveport in people's minds. But how we can work together, and I've got to tell you, it, we're doing a lot of things together, and we're looking for even more to do. And both Golly and I would tell you, since you're in Shreveport, how much we appreciate the support we get from LSU A&amp;M campus and what that means for us and what we're doing. And we're being helped because we have a very difficult challenge with our housing situation on campus, and we're getting help from the General Counsel's Office, and, thank you, Trey, and we're getting it from the Real Estate Foundation. We're getting help in other things that we've been doing, and we really appreciate that. We have a smaller bench, and we need that help, and we love the help that we get from support. Thank you, Dr. Alexander, for the fact that we have that support. So that is something that is, is great. We celebrated this week, we had a professor get our third patent for the year so far. Last year, we had twelve patents that our faculty got. The patent that was received this week is for an organ perfusion device that enables longer preservation time of organs that are intended for transportation. You didn't think we were in that business, did you? You thought that was golly. But we have, in the cyber information and the bioinformatics areas and things that we're working with, how closely we're working with research in the medical fields. And so, those things are happening, it's really important. Last night, you had the opportunity to see the Knoll Collection and the Knoll Foundation. The Knoll Foundation has given us three point five million over the last four years, plus set up a two-million-dollar scholarship account that we're going to begin to draw from, from the community foundation here. That's amazing. I mentioned the fact that we, our LSU S Foundation has provided for us fifty-two funded professorships and chairs. That's important, because our faculty have only had one pay raise, the same thing for LSU A, same thing for LSU E. So that I speak, the three of us together, one pay raise at most since two thousand and eight. And so, those help a lot in what we need to have. We are fortunate, Dr. Alexander has talked about how we have increased our student enrollment. We have. A year ago, if you were here, we would have told you we were at six thousand sixty-nine. Today, I tell you, we're at seventy-one oh-six. And if you were here in the spring of two thousand and fifteen, my first year back, we were at four thousand one hundred and seventy-nine students. We've had a tremendous increase in the online, which we're doing. We are looking in terms of what we're doing, new programs, working with what LSU A&amp;M campus is doing. We have, looking to see how we can continue to have qualities, we build that. JetBlue Airlines just, we just signed something with them in the last thirty days, that we will be the number-one online MBA program that they'll recommend for their people at JetBlue for our MBA, which is quite a success for us. We had the hot air balloon. One of the reasons was, so you would think about the fact that we're trying to become a hub in terms of what happens. We just signed an agreement with Catalapan Schools. All the training for Catalapan's teachers will occur on this campus hereout. We won't always be the teacher, but all the training is going to be on this campus. We, we are in the process of signing an agreement with Parkdale Air Force Base for all of the senior level, for their captains and their civilians, upper level, to be doing training here, involve the four-star general, who himself got involved in how it's going to be set up, and we're in the process of ready to sign off on that agreement. There was another university fairly nearby who had an interest in that. They didn't get it. So we're doing that one. By the way, General Ray, the four-star general, his son was homeschooled. He's a student here at LSU S. He had a choice wherever he went as his father came to take over. He'll be in my office on Monday morning. He comes by from time to time, we talk, but gives you an example of some of the people that are here. What we've done with the increase is we've used, we've made investments. We have made lots of investments in the campus. We have spent over almost fourteen million dollars in classrooms, bringing up our IT, doing all sorts of things, because what goes up very fast, I just told you, could come down. That's the challenge of the chancellor I have, because the faculty will see us putting so much into the classrooms and all the things we're doing, the cyber collaboratory, which we're doing, which will be fantastic. We have design thinking we're bringing from Stanford University, we're putting into effect the, for the veterans this morning. We're doing all these things that getting, that we've invested over thirteen million from this revenue we've had, this additional revenue. And the faculty say, what about our pay raises? We haven't had but one since two thousand and eight. And I can't lock in a pay raise. A&amp;M campus has been fortunate to have a number of pay raises, none big. They're falling further behind within the SEC too, so it's not that they're able to do that much either. We're all in this together for the need. But we've had no pay raises. And our faculty and professional staff have said, why can't we do something? And if I lock those in with pay raises, and what goes up can go up and down very quickly as Kaplan is taking over at Purdue University, others get into the market. If I lock my costs in too high as the chancellor, then I have the problem I have, I had when I became chancellor in two thousand and fourteen. And so, we're looking to see what can we do. And one of the things that Dr. Alexander and I didn't have enough time yesterday, the group that was with me this morning is showing, is on, is there possibly a one-time pay raises of some sort that we can work out for the people here, because they're working very hard to take that accommodation of all the enrollments that's occurred. So we're investing in it. We, we're proud of what we're doing and achieving with that, and we thank you again for the fact that you came so far to be up here, to be up here. I'll just leave one final thing. The Board of Regents has changed their funding model. And now, starting this coming year, will no longer provide appropriate dollars for out-of-state online students. They will continue to have appropriate dollars for, for residential out-of-state students, but not for out-of-state online. And the reason, I think, is because the legislature is giving no new additional dollars for higher ed. And when you see the, the additional enrollment for, for online, it, rather than to fund that and reduce down how much others might get, they've moved to eliminate that. And we don't know what that's going to be for our campus. We get eight point one million dollars. We don't know if our budget next year is going to be seven million dollars, or it's going to be six million dollars. And that's keeping me from making a pay raise for our faculty and professional staff that I would have made, because I don't know what this, this budget's going to be for our faculty and staff and our university next year. And that's something that's been a, a challenge for us to try to plan for. We thank you very much for being here. President Alexander, thank you for you personally for what you do to help us, and thank you for what your associates on the A&amp;M campus do. We're very, very thankful to you.
Thank you, Chancellor Clark. Thank you. And know that, that, that pay raise issue with the teacher salary issue is a top priority of the governor, and we want to make sure that our teachers, our faculty are part of that discussion, and it is a top priority for us, for all of us. So that is true, as well as the online, correcting the online, that's short-sighted, that's a short-sighted adoption that we need to, to address in the, in the coming months. Mr. Chairman?
Before you move down, I think Mrs. Jones had something she wanted to add.
Thank you, Chancellor, for, for all of the, the work that you're doing here at LSU S to improve the educational opportunities for students in our area. Congratulations on all of your successes, and we look forward to, to even bigger things to come. You've got some great plans you've shared with us, and I'm just looking so forward to the great.
Thank you. And I might add, I, I've got to thank for, Mr. Brown's not here today, but you and Mr. Brown have been terrific in how you've been engaged, involved with us. And you've been a commencement speaker in the last eighteen months, and so has our chair. And Mr. Williams, you rocked the house back in December, and we have a YouTube of the whole commencement, and you can catch his speech in it. And we've taken out his part, if you'd like to see his part. I'm telling you, he rocked the house.
I can imagine. But thank you again. Thank you all.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, that concludes our report. Thank you. The next item on the agenda are reports to the board. There was a Board of Supervisors quarter two informational board report provided to you. I trust that either you've read it or you will review it. And there are also two reports that have been provided that require our approval. The first one is the LSU Fiscal Year two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen Semi-Annual Financial Report for the period ending December thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen. The other report needing our approval is the LSU System Quarterly Investment Report, Fiscal Year nineteen Quarter Two. Are there any questions about either of these reports that have been previously provided?
Can, I have a question. If, if, Chancellor Richardson, if, I would just ask you to comment, in reading the reports, certainly as you look at your kind of, your memo, and you talk about the needs of the ag industry, and certainly it strikes me, as you remind us, that you've had five hundred positions eliminated over, I guess, since two thousand and eight. What would you say, and of course, I know all of our campuses have, have challenges and issues, but as you look at the ag industry and the things that we're not doing there, what, what would you say are the biggest items that we're not able to tackle as a result of the challenges that you're having?
Look, a couple of things, Mr. Chadlan. One is the continued of the strong 4-H program. We have the best 4-H program in the South, and we're probably at an all-time low in 4-H agents. And there's a direct correlation between the number of agents you've got on the ground in those parishes and the penetration you have into that, that market relative to the 4-H kids. So that's one thing I'm really concerned about. I actually had a case in this past January where I didn't have a 4-H agent in a parish for the first time I can remember. We had to move immediately to correct that. The second thing is the technology of agriculture is changing dramatically. We've got large farmers in both this area and the far other side of the state that are using the geospatial information that they're getting through satellites and drone technology. It's changing the whole scape and function of agriculture. And we have two problems. One, we've got to educate our people that work for me in that area as to what the technology is. And then, we've got to work with our farmers. Many of them will tell you, as they have, I only can use about ten percent of the technology I have. So it's not that we need more hardware, it just means they need more education in what they're doing, which is what our extension program are doing. We're looking, working with a couple of major corporations now that we think will move us a little bit farther in that road, and we're having to fill some positions with money I don't have in those areas to, to make sure we stay out in front and working, working with our particular farmer, so. And as you know, this year, it was a major tragedy in this state. We probably had the best soybean crop in the field that they've ever had. The tariff situation changed that by two dollars, two dollars and a half. And then, of course, the rain took care of the rest of it, so to speak. We had people who bush-hogged thousand acres of soybeans in some areas. So we're going through that now relative to what we're going to be doing this next year. Then we have our government shutdown, and the farmers can't get to the FCS office to fill out their paperwork and do the things they need to do to get in place, and they're trying to decide if they're going to plant soybeans or corn and so forth. The technology of agriculture is one of the most critical things. Last thing, Mr. Chadlan, it's a real issue for this state and for everybody sitting here, is the teenage obesity, obesity issues that we have in the state. And we found out over time, and with our dear friends at Pennington, that school-based programs don't work. So we're trying to see if we can use things that are, that are more family-oriented, like 4-H, to get in that family unit to realize that if we don't solve and deal with our teenage obesity problems, now all of us obesity problems, now all of us can be paying for it and the chronic diseases later on that's going to emanate from that. So we've just got a big CDC grant to help, we've got six parishes now, we're working in kind of a healthy lifestyles, healthy community programs to try to get more penetration in that particular area. So those are the kind of things that keep me up at night right now in terms of what we're trying to do and what we want to do as we look to the future.
Okay. Thank you. Keep us informed on how we can help.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions about the reports requiring our approval? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the reports. Second?
Second.
All right, moved in properly, second. All those in favor, please say aye. Is there any opposition? The reports are adopted. We'll next move to the committee reports. I will entertain one motion to approve all of the committee actions that we approved this morning.
So moved.
Second.
Having been moved in second, all those in favor of this motion, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? The motion is adopted. Final item on the agenda is the chairman's report and I only have two items to discuss. One is, as the chancellor mentioned, I was humbled and honored to be the commencement speaker here for LSU S graduation in the fall. And as I described earlier, seeing Chancellor Clark at graduation, fall graduation, was like seeing one of my children on Christmas morning. He was so excited, he was so full of energy, he bounced around, every, he took a picture with every family, children hugging him and jumping on him and it was just one of the most impressive things I've ever seen. This campus, I'm so glad I had the opportunity to come here for that exercise before coming for this meeting because it was truly an enlightening experience and this is just such an impressive operation.
You rocked the house.
Well, and I thank you for saying that, but that really was the side part of it. I was glad to have that opportunity. But what really impressed me was just what a great, great, great operation they are running here at LSU Shreveport. And I have to tell you, I'm very proud of what's happening here at LSU Shreveport. So thank you, Chancellor, and everybody.
We have a great team. It's because of our team and the students and the faculty.
The energy at graduation, I mean, there were thousands and thousands of people at this graduation and everybody was so excited. It really gave me a renewed appreciation for how important this university is to this community. So thank you very, very much. The other thing I'm happy to report, our next meeting will be March 15th in Baton Rouge, which means that will have to happen after Mardi Gras. So I do want to announce what I think is an exciting development for LSU. The Queen of the Zulu Mardi Gras Parade in New Orleans, which parades on Mardi Gras Day in New Orleans on Fat Tuesday, the first parade on Fat Tuesday. The Queen is an LSU Baton Rouge student, LSU A&amp;M student. Her name has not been made public yet, but I mentioned that because of that fact, the LSU Tiger marching band will march in the Zulu Parade for the first time in history. It's been seven years since LSU marched in Mardi Gras. They marched last in 2012 in the Rex Parade. So it's a big deal whenever LSU marches in the Mardi Gras Parade. We think this is an opportunity to showcase to the liberal world what LSU has to offer and it's going to be an incredible image to have the LSU band in the Zulu Parade in front of the Queen of Zulu. So I think that will be an opportunity for us to make a very powerful statement for the brand of our system. So I'm very, looking, looking very much forward to that. Having nothing else from the chairman, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Any second?
Second.
All right, without any objection. I figured not, we adjourn.